If not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
With the most fortunate approval. Next item is the students' gift recognition. The one act play, can you want to start us off?
I certainly do. And now we have members of our one act play here in the audience. If they want to come up. Randy Stringer is the student director. And they were awarded two important hospital awards. They received the highest honor, the ensemble award. And then the judges also unanimously won a Joe Kaiser shot, the outstanding actor plaque. Just as a side note, I've been doing this for nearly thirty years and it's the first time in school history that a Hudson performance received the ensemble award. And so it's pretty exciting. Aunt Sue Doll is their advisor. And I'm hoping, Randy, can you tell us a little bit?
Yeah, I can tell you about that. Like you said, the play is very negative bad. She's a little hateful about it. It's a play about a school shooting, which everybody will know is very controversial nowadays. And it's about this kid who, when he first starts high school, he is a good student. He's popular. And as time goes on, he starts losing his friends, things start going bad, starts getting very depressed, and he starts having thoughts about committing suicide. And then them thoughts turn to rage and turn against students in the school. And he goes back to school and shoots kids in the school. And when we saw this play, we thought it would be a really good play for schools, especially with what's happening nowadays. We really need to show people this play. So it's very strong. And like you said, we won two awards, ensemble and best actor. And just every person that's seen our play or when we went to Baldwin for our first show, they said it was very powerful. And they're still talking about it till now to this day.
I just think that's a huge accomplishment to have people still talking to play when only they seen it once. And it's just amazing that we did what we did. And we're glad that we accomplished our goal. Now, I'm just gonna have everybody in the class introduce herself.
... and tell a little moments about the play and state competition that they like.
All right. I'm Joe Kaiser Schat. And first off, I'd just like to say that most of the recognition should go to this guy right here. He personally came out and he directed it, of course. But he personally sought out each one of the actors and actresses that are in it and asked us to do it personally. And so, so I really think he should get most of the recognition. Another big section of the recognition should go to Mrs. Doll, who has been really teaching the class on pay, just through the desire to want to. And so, I don't know if she, I don't, she is here, hey! But she should really get a big chunk of the recognition, too. One thing that I really wanted to say that I haven't really, well, I've expressed it, but I, it's nice to be able to do it formally, is to, I did get the best actor award, but it's impossible to receive a best actor award without supporting actors. And so, I'm, it's, I'm, it's too bad that not everybody was able to make it here tonight. But I'd really like to thank everyone who was in it, because I couldn't have gotten it without them. So, and then I'd like to thank everyone up there. It's really nice that you guys are able to, you know, recognize some things that are going on in the high school, especially stuff like theater. That doesn't go on as recognized as sports and such. So, we all really appreciate it. So, thank you very much. And, hi Dad. So, thank you.
I'm Ari Schultz. I'm a sophomore at Hudson High School. And I am one of the main characters that gets shot. And it's, it's really, really emotionally draining going up there and doing a play about a school shooting, because it is a subject that nobody is really comfortable talking about. And it's emotional for every actor to go up there and perform about something that nobody wants to talk about. Because it's either the audience will listen and be very quiet, or the audience won't agree and will be very loud. I, this is my first year doing the one act play, but I, as I've heard, you know, you're supposed to become a family in acting. And every single person that I've acted with has become my closest family member. Like, I can trust them with anything. And it just feels really good to go up there, perform, and become a family, and also get an ensemble award for that. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Maddie Karis. I, it has been a really good experience. I thank all of you guys. It has really, like, touched me in my life. I don't know about you guys, but it, like Ari said, we have become a family. Like, I trust these guys with my lives. Like, it's, it's, you can't even describe it. It's been a wonderful experience. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Matt Hudson. I'm a junior here. I play the father of the shooter. And I just want to say thank you to everybody on the board, because without their support, I wouldn't have been able to do this and get all the memories that I've had throughout this class. So, just want to say thank you.
I'm Ally Scott Walsh. And I'm one of the other girls that gets shot, our students. And basically, everything that I was gonna say has already been said. Like, this has just been an awesome experience. And I thank everybody in the class, and all of you guys, and Mr. Lucas for letting us do it. So, yeah, it's been awesome. Thank you.
My name's Roger Knudsen. I'm a junior. I honestly don't know what was said, because I was late, but I will say it's surprising how many people in the school and in the community have actually heard about the play when we did nothing to promote it. It's surprising how many of them are willing to see it and are actually getting excited that we're going to be doing several more performances of it. And that's something that we can look forward to as a cast. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Hannah Janicki. I was the stage manager. And I kinda got into this class a little late. I wasn't there from the first day, but either way, it was great. Seeing these guys get better every day, it was so awesome. And I just want to thank you guys for letting it be possible.
Randy, can you close with telling us about some of the upcoming performances?
No problem. Soon, December 20th and the 21st, we are doing school showings during sixth hour. It's gonna, teachers can sign up for it. And it's just gonna be like diversity days. Sign up for a certain part, your class sits there and watches it. Afterwards, we're just gonna have a little discussion, a little Q and A about the play, any questions any of the students have. And after Christmas break, me and Miss Doll are planning to have a community showing. Dates are not known yet, but when there is known, we're gonna put posters, anything we can, to get people to come see it. We want to thank you again for making this happen. And you too, Mr. Lucas, for allowing us to have this play and do school showings. We appreciate it a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, students. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mrs. Doll.
Dan, if I might, just one quick comment. For anyone that knows me, of course, this is completely unnecessary, but I do just want to state publicly that any and all talent my son may display in the area of drama, he got entirely from his mother. We're both very proud of him.
And the blood's from his mother. Yeah, well.
Thank you again, students. We'll move on to the Wisconsin State Honors Band Choir and Orchestra, students?
Last February for the high school students, and then last April for middle school fifty, Hudson Middle and High School Music Students auditioned in Eau Claire for judges from the Wisconsin School Music Association for the opportunity to become members of the 2006 Wisconsin Middle Level Band Choir Orchestra or the Wisconsin High School Honors Band Choir Orchestra. Over thirty-three hundred students from across the state auditioned for placement in one of the prestigious one-hundred-member ensembles. If chosen, students have the opportunity to work with nationally-known conductors and perform to an audience of more than two thousand at the Wisconsin Music Educators Conference, October 25th through 28th, 2006. And so the following students, the students who are in the, are going to come up and say their name, and then what instrument or voice they were in, and share that information with us. Come on, guys.
I'm David Gillingham, and I play the trumpet in the Wisconsin Middle Level Honors Band.
Hi, I'm James Meinke. I sing baritone. And I was in the Wisconsin High School State Music Honors mixed choir.
I'm Alex Meinke, and I play the French horn in the High School Honors Band Ensemble.
I'm Dominic Meinke, and I play the French horn in the Middle Level Honors Orchestra.
Okay, thank you, students. And thank you, Mr. Meinke, Mrs. Rutt, and all the other teachers, Mr. Hilden, and Mr. McCarthy. Thank you for your help. So, and good luck. We'll move on then to the Wisconsin Assessment Consortium presentation team members.
All right, ladies.
The Wisconsin Assessment Consortium believes that well-implemented classroom assessment is absolutely critical in Wisconsin's quest to improve student academic performance. This is the fifth year that the consortium has offered a series of sessions on classroom assessment. Last year, our district sent a middle school team to attend the training, which involved four Saturday sessions. And this year, the consortium expanded their training model and is actually offering it on the west side of the state in Menominee. So we have a middle school and a high school team attending this year. The consortium holds four meetings a year, and they try to have at least one of their meetings on this side of the state. And on December 1st, the meeting was held in Eau Claire. I received a call from the organizers asking if our middle school team from last year would provide a presentation on how they are implementing the assessment strategies in their classrooms, and how they're sharing that information with their colleagues. The three members of the middle school team who did an outstanding job representing the district and the work they're doing in assessment are here with us this evening. We have Patty Steely, Diane Schofield, and Michelle Miller.
I'd like to, first off, say thank you very much to the board, and to certainly our administrators who have allowed for us to really take this opportunity to have a staff-driven focus on professional development, and certainly the assessment piece, that I think in this last year and a half has really become something that's near and dear to my heart, as well as these individuals that are up here with me. I would be amiss if I did not mention the other members of the middle school team, who were the first ones to go. We've been doing staff development with our middle school teachers. We've already had three in-services that we've conducted and are planning on two others. Tom Benarowski, Jay Wallen, Jody Cook, Cindy Landers, and Carol Gilbert are the other five teachers that have been with us. It's been something that has been really well-received by our teachers, which is really exciting to see. We have another set of five teachers that are in Menominee going to this. And the amount of time that we've had to get together to be able to efficiently and really do a good job with these in-services has taken time and money out of, out of our budgets to be able to have that time to, you know, create these in-services. And that wouldn't come about if it wasn't for the support that we have from our administrators, Dan Cook, or sorry, Dan Koch, Diane Franklin, and Jim Delune. And we just really appreciate that, and we want to say thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to comment that I met with the leaders of the Wisconsin Assessments Consortium following their presentation later on in the day. And they were very complimentary about our middle school assessment team and their leadership. And they were very thrilled about their presentation and the model that they were showing other districts and sharing with. So we can feel really proud of their work, and thank you so much for your leadership.
Thank you again. Before we move on to the next agenda item correspondence, what I'd like to do is, since Cindy Cremins is not here today, I'd like to have the board appoint interim clerk. And Tracy has indicated she was willing to serve in that capacity. Is the board agreeable to that? Do you need a motion on that? No? No, that's fine. Thanks, Dick. Okay, we'll move on to item number seven, reports. In the packet, you'll see a letter and some documentation that we received from the State of Wisconsin Department of Health and Family Services pertaining to the indoor environmental report and district plans. So, Tim Erickson, I believe, is gonna walk us through that. Thanks, Tim.
Sure. On October 25th, the State of Wisconsin came to the, came to the high school and performed an indoor, indoor air quality inspection. And in front of you on page five of the agenda, you'll see the cover letter that was, that was given to us. I guess just if I maybe just concentrate on some of the areas of that cover letter and what it addresses. In the middle of that first paragraph, Mr. Chamberlain, who was a person, who was the head of the inspection team that came in, said, "During my inspection, I did not find any environmental exposure issues that presented an imminent health hazard to the students or staff of the school. In fact, I found the school to be very clean and in well-maintained condition. I did find some minor issues of concern that will need to be addressed as part of an ongoing operation, operation and maintenance program, recommended for any school like the Hudson High School." So, in all, the report was very positive. Maybe just to call your attention to that second page. And it does say, and if you go to the, put the second sentence in from the top, "It is important to remember that although you have mold or bacteria present, it does not necessarily mean that you have a health hazard." And what he's referring to there is that when they, when they're looking for, doing their inspection, they're looking for active mold growth. That would be the type that would, that could become a hazard. They did not find any active mold growth in their inspection. We have, we also have prepared a district response plan on the next page, which is page seven. Okay, oh, I'm sorry. Yep, we've got it. You have an updated one in front of you that is outside the board packet. I'm sorry. And this just addresses some of the items that, it summarizes some of the items that were in the report, and just tells you where we are with those and where our projected completion dates are with some of the other items that were addressed in the, that were observed in the inspection. You'll see on the first page, we've got elevated, some elevated CO2 levels were found in some of the rooms. And we have already had mechanical contractors in looking at that to determine where that, what the cause of that problem is. And we're expecting to complete that December 15th. One of the areas that, that's a little more evident is if you look on the east side of the building, we are doing some regrading out there to channel the water away from the building. That was one of the, one of the items in the report, as far as water that was being directed back towards the foundation and causing some, causing some infiltration around the windows. So, we, we have started on that, and that will be completed the end of this month. I'll call your attention to the next page. And then we have, we have a list of different items, minor in nature, and you can see what our expected completion date is, and where we are to date on those items. And I won't go through that whole list, but you'll see many of those on the first page have already been completed. And we, we will periodically update Facilities and Grounds Committee as we go through the process of addressing all of these items.
I would just like to really thank Tim Erickson, and of course, Jim Staskel, and the Facilities and Grounds crew, who as soon as we received the report from Mark Chamberlain, they were busy that very day moving forward with these recommendations. And as you can see, many of them have already been completed. And they've been very aggressive at tackling these and adding these to their normal day-in and day-out activities. So I really compliment them for their work to move forward, to help maintain our air quality at the high school, and it's just a really compliment to them.
Any questions from board members?
Yes, Mr. President, I might just, a few comments. I guess, first, for those that don't know, I happen to be employed as an environmental health specialist for the city of St. Paul. So this issue has some special relevance for me. I guess first, I'd like to compliment my colleagues at the state for this incredibly comprehensive inspection. I think I can honestly say in nearly a decade of work in a similar field, I've never done a report of this quality or this depth. I mean, it's, it's just very, very detailed and very thorough, and it was just very, very impressive. And I think similar compliments should go out to our grounds and, and building maintenance staff, Mr. Staskel and his, his folks for, I mean, I really think the incredibly good condition of our building. While the report is several pages in length, most of these items I would term to be extremely minor, and really just kind of some increased maintenance issues. And I think for a building this size, with the activity that we have going on here, this is, this is pretty good, that things that we have here, as I said, are just really very minor. And also, just to sort of chime in with what Mary had stated, the fact that this comprehensive action plan was put into effect so quickly after we received the report, just, just very impressive. Everything very detailed, completion dates, and again, the progress that's been made is just, just impressive. So, my kudos to the maintenance staff. And I guess just lastly, to sort of comment regarding our student who saw serious health issues, you know, have sort of brought this to the fore. I know I speak for the board and we extend our sympathy to that student and her family. I know this must be a very frustrating, frustrating time. I hope that the things that we can do can perhaps, you know, make the building more compatible for, for health problems. I, I don't know, obviously, I'm not a physician, and I think it might be somewhat of a challenge, but I hope that they know that we're doing everything that we reasonably can to make our building as safe as possible for all our students. So, but again, you know, our heart certainly goes out to, out to that student.
Thank you, Mark. Any other board members? I just have a brief comment as, oh, Tom, go ahead.
Mr. President, just wondering what the current status is of, of our student. I mean, now that we've taken these measures and these steps, are there, is there an attempt to try to come back to school, or where's that at?
Tim or Superintendent?
Yeah, I think it'd be very difficult to respond in detail to that question.
Nancy, we can't hear you.
Oh, you can't hear me? Okay. I, I think, I think it would not be appropriate for, to respond in detail to that question without the permission of the parent and student. But we certainly are, just as the buildings and grounds, people are working actively. So, so is our educational team, and meeting to review and revise and, and look at alternatives. So we're very active as well, and very much in contact with the parent and, and also meeting with the student. Okay, is that sufficient? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Dan, I did have one question of Nancy. I, I don't know the student. I, I'm just curious, is this a special education student?
I can't comment.
You can't comment? Okay, that's fair. That's fair. Privacy issue?
Yes, it's a confidentiality issue.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
Any other questions we can't answer? No. My, my history with the board is that we take these issues very seriously. I know these issues have come up in the, in the past on a limited basis, but the school district has a history of dealing with these issues promptly and very thoroughly, as we're doing here. And so that, again, pleases me that we're, that we're taking immediate action and, and addressing this the way it should be addressed. That said, we'll move on to the next agenda item, and that is topics for action. We have consent items, personnel, and expenditures, and I don't have the expenditures amount in front of me, but I'll entertain, entertain a motion for the approval of the consent items. Expenditures are one million, four hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-two and forty-six cents.
Mr. President, I have moved the approval of the consent items as stated.
We have a motion by Mr. Holland. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Tracy. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. If those oppose, motion is approved. Next item for action is the band trip, and Superintendent Mary will cover that item.
This item could have appeared in the recognition of students and staff if you'd read the information about this trip. And we certainly want to thank and recognize our directors of bands, Erin Hilden and Ryan McCarthy, for their work to help our students learn and to perform at this level. They were recommended, our band program was recommended by Dr. Jack Stump, conductor of bands at Indiana University of Pennsylvania and a nationally-known composer, to perform at the NAI Dixieland Classic Festival in April in Chattanooga, Tennessee. And I'm going to let Ed Lucas talk more about this trip.
Hudson should be honored to receive an invitation like this for a specialized band trip of this nature, because it is only through a select invitation from a national conductor that we, that schools are allowed to participate in, in this venture and in this competition. So the commendation should go out to Mr. McCarthy and Mr. Hilden for the fine-per-fine job they have done with our students and elevating our students to this level to be accepted and to be recognized for their accomplishments in this program. Very few Very few bands around the country are allowed to participate in it. Again, I said it's just by invitation only, so we're looking forward to and hoping that all of our students in our band will be able to participate in this venture.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Any questions, Board members?
Are we looking for formal action this evening to approve the, the trip?
We certainly are and I recommend this for your approval.
I had just one question. I, I noted in the review of the materials submitted, there was one stop on the way down and I'm just wondering from a liability issue if we shouldn't maybe in our motion approve where that stopover is in addition to the actual destination? And I'm, I'm not sure where that stop is.
Do one of the band directors want to come forward and try to address that question? Mr. McCarthy?
Good evening, thank you. Yes, initially, as the tentative itinerary was drawn up, we were going to utilize the services of coach buses rather than air travel into the Chattanooga area. And our initial itinerary had, had us going straight through to Chattanooga in the light of actions in the last year or so, particularly with a school to the east of here. In our discussions with some travel, travel coach carriers, they recommended that we not do that from a liability standpoint of not wanting to tax the drivers and drive what will end up being about a 20 to 21 hour trip. So the stop is only so much as it is, we're going to check into a hotel, do room checks, say goodnight, let our drivers get some sleep for the safety of our kids and then continue on to Chattanooga the next day.
That answers my question and quite frankly, I was thinking exactly what happened with the Chippewa Falls Band last, last year, traveling late at night after performance. So, you know, I, I'm delighted to hear that the, that you'd be staying overnight on the, on the way down. Is that on the way back as well?
That's the plan at this point.
Great, okay.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Board members? Otherwise I'll entertain a motion.
I'll so move.
I'll second.
Motion by Dick and a second by Mark. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is approved.
And Mr. Chair, I, I should just really explain where I'm coming from in that is that, you know, even though those students may be off campus and out of the community, they are still the responsibility of the district. I heartily endorse the trip. It's a fantastic opportunity and I just, I want everything to go well and I'm sure it will, but I think we just need to be prudent of how our students travel.
Okay, thank you. Good luck on your trip and, and congratulations for getting invited. I've had the privilege of meeting Mr. Stamp, a very wonderful person, a very esteemed individual in his, in his profession, so congratulations.
I'd like to just recognize our two directors because we didn't do that in the beginning and I'd like them both to stand and thank you for your work with our students.
Okay, moving on to topics for action, the public ratification of the voluntary settlement custodial master agreement 2005 to 2007. Jen, are you gonna?
Yeah, I'm gonna take it. There were only two changes to the custodial master agreement and they were date changes to reflect 2005 through 2007. And also, and I want to get this right for Tim because we worked on this for a while, an average annual wage increase of 2.5 to 3.64 percent over a two-year period based on a four-step grid. And I know that sounds very, very complex, so Tim and I can entertain questions if you have them. Mary, go ahead. Okay, an average annual wage increase of 2.5 percent to 3.64 percent over a two-year period based on a four-step grid.
All the Board members hear that? We have been, had meetings about this in the past, closed session meetings, so we're somewhat familiar with this proposal, so I'll entertain any further discussion. If not, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the new contract.
I would move for approval of the new custodial contract for 2005, 2007.
We have a motion by Mr. Kaiser-Schott. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Tracy. Any additional discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is approved. I'd like to thank both Jen and Tim for their work as well as the Personnel Committee. We'll move on to the appointment of deputy clerk for the April 3, 2007 election. Superintendent Mary?
I would recommend to the board that Tim Erickson be identified as our deputy clerk for that election.
I'll entertain a motion.
I will so move to appoint Mr. Tim Erickson as the deputy clerk for the April 3, 2007 election.
Motion by Mr. Minnick?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bell. Any additional discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. If those oppose, motion is approved. The last, good luck, Tim. Final topic for action is the employment contract addendum and Mark's gonna speak to this one.
Yes, I am, thank you, Dan. The contract addendum in question is for our Superintendent, Mary Bowman-Eggbrodt. We had approached the Personnel Committee last month with regard to some unused vacation time, specifically seven days that she has been unable to use this year. And per contract, of course, she would have to use those by the end of this year or forfeit them. I don't need to tell everybody at this table what an extraordinary year it's been with two new central office administrators and all the many activities, too numerous to mention leading up to tonight's referendum. And so it is certainly, I think, very understandable that our Superintendent, who has worked so very hard, and I know this personally, she's had many days scheduled to take off and has had to cancel them due to some important school district activity. And I for one certainly appreciate, appreciate her great dedication and, and hard work on the behalf of our district. And so what this addendum is, is to do, is proposed to do is to allow Mary to carry over those seven days to be used by, I believe, June 30 of 2007. And Personnel Committee unanimously recommends the board approve this addendum to Mary's contract.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Do we have a motion to that effect?
I'll certainly make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Kaiser-Schott. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brian. Any additional discussion? I'd like to just echo those remarks, Mark, in terms of the hard work on Superintendent Mary and I regret that she wasn't able to use her vacation, but I'm glad, hopefully she'll be able to use it before the expiration date, so. That said, entertain a motion, or we have a motion on the floor and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is approved. We'll move on to topics for discussion. The 2007 WASB Delegate Assembly Proposals. Board members will find those proposals in the packet. They're in your packet primarily for information at this meeting. As you recall from past, well, some of the new Board members probably don't recall this, but generally we, as a board, we like to review these resolutions and provide our delegate and the alternate delegate with some direction in terms of how they should act on those resolutions at the Delegate Assembly when they meet in Milwaukee in January. So these will be coming back at the next board meeting for additional discussion, but we wanted to put these in the packet now so that Board members would have the opportunity to start reviewing the resolutions and, and certainly can try to answer any questions you might have now, otherwise we'll reserve further discussion until the next board meeting. We'll move on to the online learning pilot and Sandy, I believe, is gonna provide us with a PowerPoint presentation. Sandy?
This evening's, Nancy and Ed and I are here to discuss online learning. And tonight we are going to provide you with some important background information as well as a description of a proposed pilot online program that would occur during the 2007, 2008 school year. In January, we will come back to the school board for further discussion as well as seeking your approval to move forward with that pilot program. First, we thought might want to just clarify online, what we're meaning by online as we move forward this evening versus distance learning. And online learning really is that education where that instructional model is primarily via the internet. That's what we are focused on this evening. Some of us probably in our education career experienced distance learning, which is more synchronous and involves usually video links between participants. So if, for example, we might have had maybe a Spanish class here at Hudson and then if the teacher was videotaped and maybe a student in Somerset was picking up and at the same time taking that course, that's the distance learning piece. We again are focused on online learning where again, it's a different instructional model that occurs primarily via the internet. To give you some background with some of the research, and I'll let you read those as I just commented in the background, online education occurs every day, some form in our schools. Teachers often show or refer students to the internet sites during class and students often consult websites for their research. That information technology is promoting fundamental changes in how we teach and learn and especially those barriers of time and place are tumbling as technology offers new choices and opportunities for students and educators. Over the last 20 years, American schools have embraced virtual learning tools to enhance students' educational opportunities. With virtually all schools now linked to the interstate, internet, interstate, internet, states, districts and individual schools are increasingly adopting online courses to expand their curricula. The number of students participating in online courses is large and growing dramatically. And just to give you a little picture, one of the most popular right now is the Florida Virtual School. They're one of the nation's largest virtual middle and high schools. The enrollment has grown to over 31,000 students in the 2005-06 school year with students taking over 68,000 courses. Another piece of information, the state of Michigan now requires all high school students to complete one online course as part of their graduation requirements. In our own state, Waukesha has an IQ Academy with approximately 1,000 students attending and most of them are attending online full-time. And then locally, Amory, Menominee, Somerset, Barron, Ellsworth and Osceola have begun online courses. Now, why would we go online? And some of us who are reading those 16 trends have heard of those, the millennials. When we're looking at our students, we recognize that for them, technology is invisible. It's a tool, just like other pieces, other tools that are used in education. And as rapidly as the internet continues to penetrate our homes, usage among kids and teens is growing even faster. The internet's ability to both entertain and educate at the same, same time is critical to driving its penetration into homes and schools. And we know for a fact that households with children under the age of 18 are more likely to access the internet at 62 percent than households with no children, only at 53 percent. And again, when we look at our students right now, today's students want to use all kinds of technology to help them learn collaboratively at their own time and place and through structured activities that allow for creative, creativity and self-expression. So why would we want to consider online? First, it requires students to be active learners, not passive. And what we're talking there is more that the internet allows students to really do some more project-based activities that require them to be collaborative and to seek answers from experts around the world. It also incorporates higher level thinking because the computer can facilitate more real-world inquiries that require students to use those higher-order skills such as problem-solving, collaboration, statistical analysis and simulation. It also expands the learning, learning time. Again, we're not in one time and one place. The students can access that technology whenever they want to, even after they leave school. It gives them more time to explore interesting subjects and improve their skills. It connects students from various backgrounds. This could provide opportunities for students that are homebound or perhaps have physical handicaps. It also allows students to access students from around the world. In essence, we'd have a global village. So whether kids live in Blountstown or Miami, they'll be able to access the same resources on the internet. When we talk about involving parents as partners, of course, we always want our parents to be actively involved with their students in the learning process. And now with, with this piece, we'd even want more. We'd want our parents actively involved and obviously monitoring their students as they work online. And again, when we're talking learning styles, accommodating various learning styles, we talk about the universal design for learning, that can offer content in multiple medias again through the internet. And then obviously, we want to talk about preparing for the future. We know we are living in a knowledge-based economy. The Department of Labor estimates that new and expanding technologies will account for 80 percent of new jobs in the next 10 years. Our children must graduate from high school being language and technology literate. And now we'll let Nancy move into some of our other background.
Most of you are aware that the Hudson School District started investigating online learning early in 2005 when the Technology Council started looking into what they needed to do for their district technology plan. And at that time, the, the Technology Council came up with two main objectives that addressed online learning, to work with the district, in conjunction with the District Curriculum Council, to investigate online learning and to research and develop a plan to implement that online learning. We've also looked at it in regards to the curriculum cycle. The research and best practices has already been done, part of it in the technology plan, some of which Sandy mentioned and we'll have more here as we go on. And also, it's brought out in the Engage Process that we completed last spring, part of the state requirements, that takes a look at, that we were lacking in online opportunities for students. Going on with a little bit of the research, the, the main draw for online learning, it offers 24/7 learning. It often offers connections around the world, across the world for all of our students. And the key to most of this is that it needs to be presented in an effective manner. Training of staff is essential for online classes. We don't need, we want to be sure that we address that when we look at online learning. I've taught three online classes for UW River Falls, and attended two separate trainings they had for teachers and they are also willing to help train district staff on how to, to be good teachers in online situations. More on the research there, there is a dramatic study that shows that online classes, how much it improves the writing abilities of students. A lot of the communications in an online environment has to be done via written work instead of the, the verbal communication. And so there are many studies that show that that drastically improves with online research, or with online learning. I'll let you read some of the other research here. We can go on and on with the research. I've got piles of it, so. And there are different types of online learning. We hope that all of our teachers in the, the school district are already creating a web presence, that they also already have assignments, announcements, things posted online to help the students and that they're web-enhancing their current curriculum in their classrooms with research done online, activities done online. What we're looking at is expanding into a hybrid model where we have a course that blends online and face-to-face delivery, where the majority of the class takes place online, but you also have some scheduled face-to-face time. Those hybrid models are, can be varied. We can look at every other day, we can look at face-to-face once every three weeks, it kind of depends on the course. And then there's totally online environments too, that we can look at as we go further down the road. The district has already, again, taken a, a great steps in looking at online learning. There was a presentation to the District Curriculum Council back in January of 2006 and also for the Facilities and Grounds Committee in April. The Media and Technology Plan was approved by the state in June, in June of 2006. We created an online committee that has kind of worked and, and developed, looking at some of the research and developed what a plan might look like for the Hudson School District. Sandy's conducted meetings with union representatives to see their take on everything. Again, the District Curriculum Council discussed online learning again in December. Then the Personnel Committee, Technology Council meets again on the 18th and we'll discuss it further. So this is kind of an ongoing discussion and ongoing planning. So this is kind of an ongoing discussion and ongoing planning. The district proposal would be, right now, we'd like to start a pilot in 2007-08 using a hybrid model, where it's a blend of online and face-to-face. This was shown as the most effective model from the Madison School District. Madison started online learning very early in the state of Wisconsin and many of the models we have in state are now based upon their model. They did extensive research and found that having some face-to-face contact really did enhance the learning of the students in the online curriculum. We're looking at trying this out in both core and elective courses. We would like to have a lot of summer curriculum writing for the teachers and training for the teachers in how to develop an online class. We're looking at ways to evaluate the effectiveness of online learning through teacher, student, and parent involvement. We have different evaluation tools from WISNET and the DDO Digital Districts Online, which is a co-op that offers online classes. And they have evaluation tools to how to evaluate classes and their effectiveness. COSIN, the Consortium of School Networking, also has a value of investment assessment that we're going to apply to be one of their case studies, but even if we don't make their, they only choose three in the United States. So if we don't make their case study, we can still use their tool that looks at the value of how well does the online learning match the district's mission and goals. We also have tools already available at our disposal through Echoc. Teachers are already able to put assignments with attachments online, announcements, discussion boards, online discussions, resources. You can add videos, PowerPoints, any type of instructional materials that you'd use in class, you can put online. And assignment drop boxes where students can deposit assignments online. And we also have the tool through Skyward for Family Access for grading, so they can keep in contact with families and students as far as how they're doing in class.
And now I think Ed Lucas is going to talk a little bit about the model we're looking at.
In a typical teacher's day, they have, during a seven-hour course of the day, the teachers have, will teach five classes, they have an assigned prep hour, and they will either have a study hall or they will have some other assigned duty. And with a teacher who would choose to do an online course, our days are organized around a six-day cycle. We have the odd days and the even days. And so the opportunity would be there for the teacher to have two sections of online instruction with a period of online instruction and support, separate from the time that they would meet with the individual students. And so we're not looking to increase the amount of time that a teacher would be involved in instruction in the day. It would, they would keep the same number of hours. This would be an example of an even day schedule where, or excuse me, an odd day schedule where the student would come to school on days one, three, and five, and days two, four, and six, they would be out of school, working on their own schedule. Or the real benefit to online learning is that students can access the information at any time. So if they choose to sleep in late, or if they choose to get a job, they certainly could do that and complete the work at another time period. This is an example of another flex schedule that would occur at the end of the day for the even day students. And students would be allowed to be released early. So you can see that during these two schedules, we would have two classes of students that would either show up second hour in the morning or could leave after sixth hour in the day. So it would help somewhat with our scheduling situation, but we're not looking for online learning to be the end-all or solve our building and space needs. The requirements for a student who would want to participate in online learning are pretty high. We expect them to be, definitely have some computer knowledge. The basic knowledge and experience is essential if they are to access information with the teachers and also on the Internet. And of course, there is a level of maturity that they have to be at as well. What makes a successful online student? Again, as you evaluate these students and look at where they are at, they are highly self-motivated individuals and they have some skills to be able to operate independently. And of course, it requires excellent organizational skills and time management skills. And as Nancy talked about earlier, it does involve students to become, play an active role in their own learning process and to take ownership for their learning.
Again, we'll be back in January then for further discussion and then seeking your approval to move forward. We are currently, we'll be able to come back in January too with specifically what courses we would be offering through the registration process. Currently, departments are deep into discussion trying to decide what courses they'd like to offer through that online pilot. And, but in January, we'll be able to come back with specifics.
And I just want to mention too, that we also, right now, are conducting a survey of our juniors and seniors, their views of online learning. So we'll have those results before Christmas in time to be able to come back to the board in January with what our own students thought, too.
Nancy, can you refresh for us, what's the percentage of our students who have access to computers at home?
At home, the last time we surveyed, which I think has been at least two years now, was 87%. And then 93% had access somewhere. It might not have been at home, but had access. That's another question we did ask on the survey too, of our juniors and seniors.
I have a question for Nancy or Sandy. If we were looking at a course that would be offered online, would it also be offered in the traditional way at school?
Yes. Right now, we're asking for courses so that students would have a choice of either taking it online or the traditional, the traditional face-to-face daily. So those are the courses that we're seeking to pilot for next year.
Board members, do you have any questions? Brian?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
We spent a little bit of time talking about this in the Long Range Strategic Planning Committee as well as about, you know, as we move forward, you know, the opportunity here with online learning. And there was a couple of points that I'd like to bring up besides that just a, you know, it could be a much better use for some of our facilities in both short-term and long-term. Also, I think it provides a vehicle that we can offer other curriculum options, you know, as we look at curriculum and things like that, you know, whether it be Mandarin Chinese or whatever. It gives us some options where we may not have them previously. And also, I think it just really helps our students prepare for the global workspace they're going to be, workplace they're going to be going into. For those of you who subscribe to Business Week, the front cover of Business Week is, you know, basically blowing away the clock at Best Buy, talking about how Best Buy's basically moved away from a traditional workplace and how most of the employees work remotely, online. And basically, I've done away with the idea of coming to work and jumping in your cube. So, and that was in the cover of Business Week. So I think there's some nice short-term things we can do here, but long-term, I think this is a nice launch point for some things we could do in the district, so.
Thanks, Brian. Sandy?
I have a question for Sandy or maybe Principal Lucas. You have a list of the characteristics that students would need to have in order to be successful in this kind of option. How will you determine which students have those characteristics and how would you control the entry into the course?
Truly, the registration process is a student-choice process. I mean, as part of that, we'll probably end up going into classrooms, describe more detail what is online, what kind of characteristics are more, you know, make students more successful in online classes. But it really does come down to student choice. And again, on registration, parents sign off that they approve their student being in that course. We will be doing a little bit of checking with technology knowledge, because again, if they don't know more than how to turn on a computer, they're going to really struggle. So that's the piece that we can put some qualifying factors on. But otherwise, it's going to be a lot of looking at, parents and students looking at themselves on whether they feel they'd be successful.
Actually, also Spooner has an evaluation tool they use with their students before they can take an online class, too. And we just haven't gotten a copy of it yet to see what it looks like. And so there are some tools out there that we need to look at.
And we've also had a little bit of discussion about actually providing students here with either a tutorial or maybe a summer course in how to take an online course. So that could provide the background information that they might need to be successful.
Thank you. I'm really excited about this opportunity, so appreciate the extra information.
Other board member questions, comments?
Just a quick comment. In terms of facilities, and I see the time is now eight o'clock, so the referendum is over, so I can speak a little candidly. One of the reasons we didn't go to referendum for secondary solutions is we don't know what that building should look like. And this goes right back to Brian's comment. Best Buy is changing, I saw that article, and it's right on. I would dare say the building that we would ultimately utilize for secondary solutions is going to be entirely different than what we probably perceive today, much less what our current secondary facility here looks like. I do know some things, it's going to have a heavy interface with technology, it's going to have to have a incredible energy efficiency and sustainability program. But that's the type of facility that for our kindergarteners, first graders, second graders, those are eventually the students that are going to be using that facility. You know, if we're successful tonight, you know, we can begin to focus on secondary. And I think it's an exciting, exciting opportunity and it just ties in perfectly with what we're doing with strategic planning. But whatever that building is ultimately going to be for secondary solutions, it's going to be very, very different than I think what we might perceive today.
Can I make one comment on that? Every time I drive to work, I pass the Best Buy building, it's a huge, you know, monument, the Best Buy. I'm just wondering what they're doing with all that space now, where the workers, you know, workers are all online, so.
In my business, we don't like that. A lot of empty space.
Any other board members, comments, questions? I guess, I also think it's, you know, it's an exciting thing, it's a direction we need to be going. I guess I can't help but overlook the financial side of it, and I'm surprised Mr. Kaiser Schad didn't beat me to that switch here. Are there some, both in terms of sort of implementing this cost, I've also heard that, you know, in terms of students, and probably initially, it wouldn't be offered to any students outside the district, but I know there's some online learning where students from outside the district can tap into a district's online learning program, so are you able to address any of those questions?
You are correct that currently, we're just looking for opportunities for our current students. And then, I lost my train of thought. The cost piece, since the teachers currently are teaching five classes and they'd still be teaching five classes, there would be no cost there. The only pieces I would need to work into my budget is the summer curriculum piece. That Nancy, because of her experience teaching online, recognizes that what's needed is that online preparation, upfront preparation. And so we would work into my summer curriculum writing that there would have to be time for those teachers who do move forward to have that preparation time this summer.
I think also, though, we're looking at the number of students that we have currently homeschooled that are attending virtual academies, that if we can offer some opportunities that they're looking for through a virtual academy, we can maybe keep them in the district or bring them back to the district there. And, you know, down the road, maybe we have kids from other school districts taking classes here too, on a cost basis.
Okay, thank you. Cindy?
I know that I came in while you were presenting, so you might have already said this, but I guess the question is, oh, I forgot. Never mind, I'll ask again later. I forgot.
Okay. There's no other comments, questions for board members, we'll move on. Feel free to contact either Sandy or Nancy with any questions that you might have. Cindy, you may remember after you leave here what your question is.
I'm sorry.
Please don't hesitate to contact them. Mary?
And you will have one more opportunity to revisit this in January when we will be asking for board action at that time. We'll have some more information to share. And Cindy, I know you'll have that question by then.
I'm sorry, it's just been a very long day. It's just a long day. I'm sorry. I'll remember.
Okay. Moving on to superintendent's report on upcoming events, district highlights. Mary?
Each year in the spring, at the April-spring election, we have two to three school board seats up for election at that time. And this coming April, April 3rd, there are two Board of Education seats that will be elected then. And these are the seats that our incumbents currently hold, Mark Kaiser Schad and Cindy Kerman's seats. And I just want to go through the timeline so that if anyone is interested in completing nomination papers, that they'll have those dates. The incumbents, our two board, current board members, will need to file if they do not plan to run for reelection by December 22nd at 5:00. And then all other candidates who would like to be on the ballot need to complete nomination papers no later than 5:00 PM on January 2nd. And you can obtain those forms in the superintendent's office from Diane Radell, my secretary, during our regular business hours, 7:30 to 4:30. Moving on to education, the Education Foundation and the grants that they have identified for our teachers and students. And once again, I can't say enough about the Education Foundation of Hudson and how they support the work of our teachers and the learning of our students in many different ways. They have just now awarded to the Hudson Schools 18 grants. This involved 36 of our teachers, three students, for a total of a little over $36,000. And one thing I'd just like to point out that I really commend and thank them for, we as a district are really identifying some essentials at each of our levels, at elementary, middle school, and high school. And the foundation and our teachers are identifying grant opportunities that are aligned with this direction at each of our levels. And I really compliment the Education Foundation for supporting the work of our teachers in moving us forward even more rapidly than we would move by ourselves. So thank you to the Education Foundation. And then moving on to the elementary space for learning. Following this Board of Education meeting, we have announced to the public on our website that the board will be gathering for referendum results. We will be, Tim Erickson will be taking results from each of the polling places in the cafeteria in, at the high school. And then the board will be gathering at the Hudson Golf Course. Now, there was a question that came up to me, whether any school district funds were being expended for the golf course. And certainly, no district funds at all are being expended there. We have resources here at the high school where we are collecting those election results, certainly, but there are no public funds being expended at the golf course. And then, I would just like to go back a little to May of this year. And we had three new board members who joined us at that time, Brian and Tracy and Tom. And almost immediately, when you took seats on the board and we formed the new and current board, we started moving forward with elementary space for learning. And you spent the summer really studying the data, really getting immersed in that data, reviewing various options and the pros and cons of each of those options. You collected information that you needed to make good decisions. And then you took time to share information with the municipalities and the townships and their boards and let them know where we were in that decision-making process for elementary space for learning. We conducted, and you spent lots of time, at information sessions and feedback sessions with the public and spoke to around 250 of our community members and received and considered feedback that they gave you before you were making final decisions. You also implemented a short-term solution for the elementary, focusing on long-term, but really implemented a short-term solution that you considered as well. but really implemented a short-term solution that you considered as well. And then, you made very challenging, and sometimes difficult decisions, on behalf of our students, and our staff, and our community, about elementary space for learning, and held two more information sessions for those people who became aware and needed to find out more information, just a few days ago. Nothing in the district, and your work, stopped during this time period. You continued on with all the other work that the board is acting in, your committees and so forth, and regardless of the outcome tonight of this very important election for, a referendum for our district, and our community is making a decision, a very important decision, about whether we will build a new elementary school. But regardless of that outcome, on behalf of our students and our staff, I'd certainly like to recognize and thank you for your work, your dedication, your commitment, your leadership in this community, and the time and talents that you have shared with all of us to move the long-term elementary solution forward, and to recommend to the community that we build a new elementary school. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary, and on behalf of the board, I'd also like to thank all the staff, administrators, members of the community, Hudson Star Observer, for, this has been a community project, it hasn't just been a board-driven project, and I want to thank all of those involved, and certainly, the community will speak this evening, and whatever direction they point us, we'll, we're committed to quality education for our kids, so no matter what kind of facility we're put in, we'll make that happen, so, thank you. We'll move on to citizens' requests to speak to the board. We do have an item from Mr. McClinsky on secondary long-term planning. Bob, if you want to come forward?
I'm Robert McClinsky, 1301 Freear Street, Hudson. And I just ask a courtesy, Mr. Chernowhy, it's McClinsky?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Bob.
Okay. The polls are closed, the elementary school referendum is presumably a success, so I'm calling upon the board to immediately begin addressing the long-term secondary facilities needs of this district, which, up to this point, you haven't done. There are many people in this district who voted against the 8-9 building referendum in 2003, because they wanted the district to build a high school at that time. Now, those people are still around, most likely, they've been joined by a number of people who voted no this evening for the same reason. Of course, there are people like myself, who voted yes today, despite our feelings that the crowded high school is actually the more important problem that's facing our district. So, I'm here to tell you that the constituency of citizens who do want a new high school is out there, and speaking for them, I'd say they were getting woefully tired of waiting for some action. A couple of months ago, I asked the board why you flat-out refused to start long-term planning for secondary space. Mr. Minnick's reason was that the community is not ready to vote for a new secondary building. Well, the community may or may not be ready or willing to vote for a new secondary building right now, but in my mind, that's not the point. The community did not elect you seven board members, excuse me, seven board members to fortuitely tell the political winds of the electorate, they elected you to do a job. And I believe that job includes planning for both short-term and long-term needs of this district. After you get done with your planning, you can set about convincing the public that a new building is needed, just like you did with this elementary school. For example, Mr. Bell is leading a new long-range strategic committee that is planning for 15 years out, I believe. At the same time, Mr. Minnick is leading a facilities committee that refuses to plan farther out than, more than two years for secondary schools. Two years, and that's it, refuses to look any farther than two years. I asked Mr. Holland if such short-sighted planning would be acceptable at the YMCA's. I can tell you that at my company, it would be unacceptable to plan only two years out, especially when you have a problem this huge. As I see it, it's a neglect and refusal to do your elected duty, and you have no reasonable excuse to do so. So, Mr. Board President and Superintendent, on behalf of the citizens of this district, I call upon you to instruct the Facilities and Grounds Committee today to immediately begin discussing and researching the long-term solutions to the high school crowding problems, including the building of a new high school facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Do we have any comments? Okay, Superintendent Mary?
Bob, again, I appreciate your support of the district, and moving forward with a secondary solution. And I certainly hope that we are able to move forward. We'll look at those election results, or the referendum results tonight, and then determine the next steps, and that certainly will be part of our consideration, because we know there are secondary needs.
Okay, no further board or administrator comments. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I move to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Bell?
Second.
Second by Ms. Krimmons. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Thank you for coming this evening.